There must be.
I hate it.
And a nice new job.
Yeah.
Nice color.
And there's no like. Or something, something else weird like that.
Delete.
That's what it is.
Yeah, no forward.
It's better.
Whatever you get used to.
Anything.
And go forward.
We're hiring kids that grew up on all the Google and.
You're set to go.
They're best.
Good evening, everybody. It's five thirty-three. I will call. The planning commission meeting. For. February twenty-fourth to twenty twenty-five to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Giller. Mr. Lees.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Garrett.
Here.
Ms. Gort. Mr. Fractor.
Here.
Uh, planning commissioners, are there any changes to the minutes? Mark? Mark, are you okay with the minutes from the last? Okay, thank you. You betcha. And Chris, is there any changes to agenda?
There are no changes tonight.
All right. With that said, I'm gonna open the meeting to public comment on historic preservation issues that are not on the agenda this evening. As part of a certified local government, we are asked to take com- public comment on historic preservation issues in the community. And with that, I will open the meeting to any public comment. Please raise your hand with the icon on the bottom of your screen or press. Uh, star nine if you're attending the meeting by phone and then star six to unmute yourself. And do we have anybody out there, Amelia?
Great.
Ethan, I have a comment.
Okay.
Um, in light of what we've seen in LA. My, my comment is more of a question and it's more directed to you, Mark. Do we as, as town? Have a. Plan? Should something catastrophic happen firewise in Breckenridge? In terms of what we would do to ease the regulations, ease the permitting? To rebuild, things of that nature. Has the town ever talked about that as a contingency plan? Cause I think they should.
Thanks, Mark. Um. We obviously have evacuation plans and like stuff like that, but in terms of what you're talking about and kind of like what Governor Newsom did. Out there, um, and providing.
Were they lax the regulations?
We haven't had that particular discussion. Um, we obviously allow for, um. Um, homes to be rebuilt if they've been destroyed and, um, we recently, um. Revised the code because before the planning commission kind of had to give the okay to go forward with that and now. They don't. It's more straightforward. Just go to staff process in most cases. But it's a, it's a good question and it's certainly something we could, um, talk about as staff and bring up to.
Should think about.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay.
Uh, we'll move on to the consent calendar and we have the Rankin residence. PL twenty twenty-five dash zero 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 five. Does anybody wish to call this up? I, I, I don't wish to call it up per se. I just have a comment, um, on the points seeing, um. Uh, the negative points being the, the setbacks on the relative policy and, and it's offset by the three. EV chargers. And I know this has come up a couple of times and it's just a comment that it seems that we're, we're. It seems too easy to get these three points for three charges. Seems like. All due respect, I don't think that people are gonna be using the recharges in their house and, um, nothing against. The applicant, but, um, for us internally, it seems like perhaps we should rethink. The, um. Three, the three available points or one point for each up to three. Seems like one, maybe two. Anyway, that's my comment.
And I brought that comment up.
I know you, you have and I'm reiterating that, so.
And I share your concern.
Okay.
I've brought it up before too. I think like technology moves along and it used to be. A big thing and now it's not so much a big thing, so.
No. Anyway, moving on.
Something else new. It's good.
And I think to Ethan's point, um, you know, one charger is probably what will get used. The likelihood of people having three. Cars that need to be charged there at any one time is pretty unlikely, so. And, and I just had one question, uh, for you, Todd. What is the vibe room?
We all had that question.
Hi, I'm Barbara Rankin. I'm the owner of one nineteen North Pine for the record. Um, and we have a young cousin who hangs out at our house a lot and we have a bedroom that is dedicated to a giant couch and a giant TV. And we call it the vibe lounge. He named it and we wanted to, uh, have that in our new house as well. And honestly, I didn't realize that that was gonna. Be what it was called and what went to you as well. It's fine.
I come over and vibe out?
And you might notice we tried to make it so we could watch hockey from the hot tub too, so.
Yeah.
There's lots of. We've, we've trying to think of everything.
It's a beautiful design. Thank you.
I'm happy to answer any other questions if anyone.
It's a lovely project.
So I guess on that note, uh, the consent calendar stands as, as approved. And we can move on to work sessions. And so up next, we have the Wahaken Bites. Cart renewal. And that is, uh. PL twenty twenty-four dash zero five one one. And Ellie.
Sorry, we gotta do a little shuffle here. Before you tonight is, um, the renewal of the large vendor cart Wahaken Bites. Um, this is located at, uh, three twenty-seven North Main Street, um, and. Um, has the adjacent uses of the Snyder subdivision vacant lots. Um, to the north, um, and then the Jenny Exchange Building to the south, um, and then the public open space and Blue River to the west. Um. This vendor cart, um, was previously operated by Stella's Hungry Horse from twenty thirteen to twenty sixteen. Um, and then it gnarly shawarma from twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen. And most recently Yo Mama's Tacos, the burritos from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one. Um, and then as of August of twenty twenty-one, um, it is now operated by Wahaken Bites. Um, staff reviewed the, um, vendor cart against policy forty-nine, um, for vendor carts. And because the vendor cart is over eighty-four square feet in area, it is considered a large vendor cart. Um, in reviewing the design standards for the, um, large vendor carts within the conservation district. We found that the vendor cart complements the surrounding building character through, um, its existing design. Um, and is, um, constructed of professional. Constructed of professional quality and has been kept in good working con- condition, having been repainted twice, um, in the past several years. Um, the cart exists entirely on private property and, um, sells Mexican cuisine for immediate consumption. Um, there's no proposed changes with the existing signage that was previously approved. Um, and it is, um, hooked up to the power grid, um, with, um, electricity directly from Excel. Um, the wheels for the cart additionally are screened and as well as the trailer hitch, um, and the cart has a valid business license. And it's found to be windproof, waterproof and locked when not in operation. Um, is on the outside of the cart, um, there are currently three picnic tables. Um, with seating attached to them, um, to create an outdoor seating area. And then there is one existing fire pit. Um, and the cart has been approved by Summit County Environmental Health. Um, when reviewed against policy eighteen for parking. Um, restaurants are required to have three point five parking spaces for three thousand square feet, which ended up with roughly one space. For, um, required for the large vendor cart. And there are several, um, paved parking spaces available in the lot behind the cart, um, for customers to use. Um, so staff has no concerns and found that the project meets all, um, all absolute and relative policies and recommends approval.
Thank you, Ellie. Does, uh, any of our commissioners have any comments, Ellen?
Yeah.
Comments?
Um, I've asked this before, but whenever we get a restaurant or cart application, I think we should get samples. Otherwise, uh, no, I'm good. Thanks.
Thanks. No comment.
No comment.
Mike?
Was it clear to me if all of the nine parking spaces had to be paved or just one required space?
So, um, it's just required that their, um, official parking be paved. Um, so like the parking, they have to have available, um, paved spaces for parking for the vendor cart. Um, so because there are paved spaces in the lot behind them, that is what we count as the parking for the vendor cart. Um, while you can see a car in this photo parked behind there, that is not a paved space, so that would not be considered an official parking space. Um, so if they for some reason wanted to develop the lot in the back, then that would become an issue with the parking. For the vendor cart, um, but otherwise there, we find their parking satisfied.
Okay, I'm still confused. It says staff has added a condition of approval that all parking shall occur on paved nine by eighteen spaces.
Um, yes, so the parking for the vendor cart is supposed to be occurring on the paved spaces. Um, so we don't consider the unpaved spaces behind the cart official parking spaces?
So would it be single space, no S?
Um, yes.
Yeah, e- essentially I think where you're getting at, like that's all not a legal parking space. It'd be similar to like if you parked a vehicle in your, your front yard or.
Yeah, maybe just a friendly suggestion to clarify. Otherwise, no questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Mike. Mark, any questions or comments?
No questions, no comments.
Okay, then someone, I think we can. Calling it up to.
Uh, Mr. Chair. You just, uh. We should probably open it up.
Oh, yes, we need to open up for public comment. Sorry about that. Let me remove my, uh, new collar. New shirt. But brought it in special for you guys. Like, what is this? Why am I feeling this way? Okay. Any pu- public wish to comment? If so, and you're online, please raise your hand with the icon at the bottom of your screen. Or press not, uh, star nine if you're attending the meeting by phone or star six to unmute yourself.
Uh, there's no one online who wishes to comment.
Okay, thank you. And the applicant's not here. Great. Carry on, Mike.
Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commissioner, um, approved the large vendor cart renewal PL twenty twenty-four. Dash zero five one one located at three twenty-seven North Main Street with a passing point analysis. Of zero points along with the attached findings and conditions of approval. And the small clarification to pavement, paving parking.
Second.
Right. Chris?
All right. Ms. Gort.
Yes.
Ms. Proper.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
Mr. Lees.
Yes.
Mr. Fractor.
Yes.
And Mr. Giller.
Yes.
Starting the parking again. Like say, uh, not, uh, specific to this application, but like. Say like. Any other restaurant in town, where do they, is, does, do they consider the street parking or paid parking as part of their parking?
Um, so if the parking's not available to be provided on site, then, um. I believe they can pay a fee in lieu to kind of mitigate some of their parking. I feel free to correct me.
Yeah, we, uh, for commercial, um, really the, I guess. The backup, all residential parking for development has to be achieved on site.
Right.
Um, but for commercial within the parking district, which would be Main Street and Ridge Street roughly. Um, if you're not able to accommodate it onsite, you can, you can pay a, a fee in lieu into the parking district. And then that money is held in reserve. And then when we have big capital projects, that's used to, um. Pay down debt on existing infrastructure. Um, perform maintenance on public parking or, um, like in the case of the recent parking structure, to build a new parking facility.
Got it. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, next up we have the BGV in Trotta parcel seven employee housing. PL. Twenty twenty-four dash zero five zero zero zero. And I believe Amelia will be presenting this for us.
Yes, I will. Thank you very much. Yes, my name is Amelia Brackett. I am a planner with the town. This is my first presentation to you all, so don't hold back. I have wonderful people to punt to if I need to, so, um, but let me get set up here real quick.
Me and Trotta left over from when it was gonna be a shopping center? Or is that something going further back?
Okay, so this is one of the. Many parcels that you all have been, uh, reviewing lately, the BGV development agreement. This is parcel seven. It's an employee housing project, um, to provide the employee housing that's required for the Imperial Hotel on parcel four. So, um, in my presentation, I'm just gonna start by covering some backgrounds and then I'm gonna summarize kind of that more, um. A little more black and white sort of hard number standards, um, that staff, uh, reviewed and then we'll get into. Some of the main points that I think really need, um, you know, Commissioner, um, input. So first of all, this is up there just north of seven eleven on the corner of Huron Road and Highway nine. Was annexed into the town in twenty twenty-four. And there's like how layers of regulations, um, at play here. The one we'll talk about the most is the annexation agreement. That's the agreement that brought it into the town, actually has a lot of zoning information within it. At zoning, I know isn't a hot word in Breck, but I might use it accidentally a few times. Sorry. Um, but land use regulations, um, within it. Now, we're also dealing with that development agreement that governs all of the parcels in addition to. The code and then also there are references to the land use district, which is number five. So the proposal is for forty-one bedroom units. The floor plans, um, which aren't in my presentation, but I'm happy to go into if you have questions. Um, but they include, uh, entrances on the north and the south of the property. Uh, storage areas that have space for each unit. Also some flex space and then balconies or walkout patios, depending on, you know, what floor you're on. Let me get to the site plan here, talk you through it a little bit. So just to orient you, north is up there on the top, um, that's the mixed, the property to the north is that. Mixed commercial residential and then to the east is, I think it's called the store and go, the Breck store and go, um, but it's self-storage. And then Huron Road to the south and seven eleven and then, uh, Highway nine to the west. So up there along the north and the east sides of the property, you can see. Kind of minimal landscape buffering. We'll get into that in a minute. Um, but there's also fences. So there's a fence proposed on the north boundary and then there's an existing fence on the neighboring property on the east. And this little triangle of white here, that's the access down on that southeast corner. That's the access for the property to the east. So it's not really part of the calculations for this project, but it is on the property and so that's why it's up there. And then you, moving toward the corner, that intersection, you can see the open space, landscape buffering, some external, um, sort of. Um, a small amenity spaces, um, and then also some pedestrian access. Out to the east and then down sort of pointed in the direction of the intersection. It's also the dumpster area for trash and recycling, um, as you move kind of up the west. And then there's the bus stop also about a third of the way up, um, the property on Highway nine. The last thing I want to point out here is just that there is existing access up there on that north corner, um, and that's proposed to remain. They've actually, I think, already got a C dot permit for it, but they'll obviously also have to, um, check, you know, any, any final improvements with C dot. And then they're also proposing to finish out, um, the sidewalk along Highway nine. So like I said, I'm just gonna kind of run through a few of those, uh, basic standards that, uh, we looked at. So first of all, uh, look through the density that's allowed on this property. Found that it is below what's required. I'm happy to go through that in more detail, but I'll just leave it there for now. Also looked at, um, the land use, of course, that's stipulated in the agreements. Also checked out open space, snow storage, setbacks and parking. Those, uh, dip into the agreements and the code. It kind of runs the gamut there. Couple of things to note on that. The open space is below thirty percent, which is what's required in the code for projects like this. However, the annexation agreement allows that as long as greater than twenty percent is provided. Last, we checked, I think it's like twenty-seven, twenty-eight in this most recent iteration. So they're good on that per the annexation agreement. Um, in addition, I just want to note that this snow storage plan, you know, in the agreements, it does talk about how the, uh, site is constrained with access and circulation. Um, and so it contemplates a few things there and snow storage is one of the things that we, uh, find that it meets the requirements, but it is something that we went back and forth with the applicant a little bit. Uh, between planning and engineering staff. They did respond to all of the comments that we had on their first submittal, but this will go back out to engineering, uh, one more time at least, um, before final. And then as I mentioned, there is a fence proposed along that northern boundary, um, and fencing is allowed per the annexation agreement. They're gonna need to show actual elevations because there are design requirements, um, but that'll be at final hearing. So now we're done with all of the cut and dry stuff and we're getting into the conversational pieces. Uh, so staff asked for you all to comment on a few things in particular, uh, architectural compatibility. The appearance of the north and south elevations and then finally the, um, adequacy of the buffering on the north and the east. So I'm gonna start with the buffering just cause it's, uh, here up on the site plan. Um, again, not to belabor the point, but the annexation agreement really kind of. Pushes us in a direction here. It has specific language saying, look, there's not enough buffering, uh, there's not enough space on the property, so. Reduced buffering on the north and south is acceptable as long as there's some other type of, um, berm or fence. So staff finds that this meets that, um, you know, we looked at a few things. First of all, the language is pretty clear. So they were proposing a fence and then they're also using or sort of referencing that, um, existing fence on the east. But then, you know, just to sort of cross our, cross our i's and dot our t's, definitely the other way around. Um, but just to do that, you know, we also considered the fact that these are relatively low impact uses to the north and to the east. And so. The landscaping that's provided plus those fencing staff finds that the buffering is adequate. And but of course, we're interested to hear, you know, if you agree with that analysis. In terms of architectural compatibility. I'll start with what the annexation agreement, um, allows. So it does allow for non-natural materials, um, but it require, and also the modular construction. Um, but it requires that there be, um, uh, natural wood trim. And then also the siding material, which they're both, they're both meeting. Uh, so then above and beyond those requirements, um, they are also, you know, one of the other things we have to contend with is the compatibility piece that's in the code. So we referenced the land, uh, land use districts and sort of the general, um, architecture of Breckenridge. And, you know, evaluated that this does meet sort of that modern and mountain look, but with, um, with natural appearing materials. So happy to discuss that bore, um, for the specifics, you know, but the sort of pronounced overhangs. Um, and brackets and the materials and coloration, like all that and the width, the siding figured. This does sort of fit, um, with other, other recent construction in the town. And then finally, so the height. Let me show you here, um. We're really looking at the south elevation, so this one. And then. I'm actually just gonna stay on this one for a minute because it kind of takes a second. Um, so the height in terms of numbers is met. Um, they're below the max that's allowed. However, the language that requires interpretation is that these elevations present with certain stories. So the south elevation, um, the agreement requires that it present as two stories. Staff looked at this, thought that was pretty reasonable as presenting as two stories. And then also took a look at the north elevation here. Which this is, the natural grade is a little bit lower on this side anyway, but this is, um, allowed to be two and a half to three stories in its presentation. It's allowed to be. Three stories, but in terms of the way that it presents. You know, on the main part of the facade, you've got a pretty clear three-story look, but then also to accommodate the, uh, stairwell, you do kind of have this sort of two and a half. Story, um, presentation in the front as well. So again, it ticks that box in terms of looking and presenting as a three-story. But then also sort of added is it softens a little bit with that stairwell, um, bump out. So again, those are sort of the three main things. We're looking for some feedback on the buffering, the architectural compatibility and the height appearance. Um, but certainly there's a lot of different things that we could discuss, so I'm happy to take whatever questions that you have.
Thank you, Amelia. Great presentation. Appreciate it. Uh, does. Mark, do you have any questions, comments for Amelia?
Yeah, so, uh, again, the purpose of the Entrada project is to fulfill the requirements of employee housing. Regarding the development of lot four, P K subdivision filing number one.
That's correct, yep.
While policy twenty-four requires this obligation, I'm unclear. As to what the policy requires in terms of the duration of the obligation. Can you elaborate that on that?
That is a great question and I, I cannot. Um, I'm so sorry, but if I could punt to one of you two, please.
Sure, yeah, that. Basically, the obligation is to provide deed restricted housing in perpetuity, solve our deed restrictions that we.
So it's in perpetuity.
It's in perpetuity, yeah.
Couldn't find that in the code.
It's in the.
Thank you. The forty proposed single bedroom units here exceed the units required for the Imperial Hotel project. Um, is that correct?
I, I know that they, it matches what's in the agreement. I don't know if it exceeds what's required, um, in the latest Imperial Hotel calculations.
You're saying, yes, it does exceed. Okay, so then my question is, what is? What is the surplus and how will those be used or applied going forward?
But, I mean, I, I think part of it, it was, you know, they, they had to design the building that they knew was to accommodate. Um, what they needed to offset it parcel four. And so in doing so. I think they, they factored in there was to be some surplus depending on kind of the, the give and take. But also contemplating that there would be a surplus, the, the council. In either the annexation or the development agreement basically said that they can't bank. That housing for another development, like basically them building it, they're just building extra. I mean, they have the benefit of, of owning it or selling it as a deed restricted unit, but it can't be used for. Um, like a future project or, or something like that. But just because of, it, it, there is a bit of a chicken and egg with this of designing a, uh. You know, where I think they want to do this concurrently, um, of designing a building that. Meets the requirements of parcel four. And I think also, you know, realistically from an operations standpoint, having a little bit of extra housing. You know, with them already building a building is also a, a, a benefit, you know, for their organization, but I can have them speak to it a little bit.
So Chris, my question is, let's say we got forty, let's say we only need thirty-seven. Gives us three extra. Are those three then available for BGV to use for employees? At Imperial without deed restriction for whatever need that they have? How does that fall? How does that fall in the realm of things?
No, basically they, they are obligated, anything that's on the site has to be deed restricted housing. Because there is, is part of the reshuffling of the density. There actually is some density being transferred here. So that, that's part of the agreement is if you have extra, it can't be market rate, it can't be banked for offsetting a future project.
I got the part about the future project, it just didn't get, the rest of it wasn't clear.
Yeah, it may be point of clarification. The units don't necessarily have to be rented out to the Imperial Hotel employees. It's just that they have to accommodate them at least that much. They may be to any employee, BGV, or they could be otherwise to other people, but they gotta be gainfully employed 30 hours a week here in the town of Breck.
The development agreement specific to Entrada, the annexation agreement contains language would, would allow the owners to apply to the town for permission to turn some or all of the units into condominium units in the future. Yet there's no prescriptive language in the document stipulating how that would work. And further, how it would remain in compliance with policy 24, should they do that? Can you explain the town's thoughts and intentions regarding that?
I'll, I'll, I'll jump in again, just for having the benefit of working on the development and annexation agreements. But basically the entire amount of square footage in this building will be deed restricted and restricted to qualified occupants is what, what Mark was alluding to. So, you know, if it's not condominiumized, it's really just one structure and serves as apartments. But if it were to be condominiumized to individual units in the future, that same amount of square footage is still deed restricted, and so it would be still bound by this, the same language for qualified occupants at all, all the terms of the, the deed restriction, whether it's condominiumized or it remains an apartment. But there was, they could, they could probably speak to some of the options. I mean, they may choose to just own and operate the apartment building, they may choose to condominiumize and sell some of the units either to individuals or, or to other businesses that would want to use it for employee housing. But at any rate, whether it's a condo or apartment, it has to meet the, the terms of the deed restriction.
Well, you kind of answered half my question. My, my question is specifically, there's a prescription here about what the rent is and what the AMI is. And the fact that the rent goes up 3%. And at the end of three years, it's reviewed and it may go up another 3% in perpetuity. But there's no language about condominium. And how would those be priced? And how would that compensation work? You know, would there be an HOA fee that would be then added? And is that commensurate with what the rent would be? And there's a lot of loose ends there that I feel like the town just didn't address and isn't addressed.
Well, I, I guess I can, I could look through the, the terms, but there were, you know, like obviously the escalating costs, but basically like someone buying, I guess, a unit if they were to be sold individually would understand that they would either be living there or they would have to rent it subject to the terms of, of the, of the development and annexation agreements. So like in, in doing so, like understanding that there's a, a ceiling on, on rent and how much I can escalate from year to year over a certain amount of time. It's also going to from a market standpoint, it'll limit like what they can sell it for realistically. Since, you know, if it, if it were a deed restriction light and there was no limit on what they could rent. And it was only, you know, subject to someone being a qualified occupant, they, that would likely sell higher than something if there's a cap on what you can rent it.
We're talking about two different animals. In one case, you have a rental apartment, which is a different animal than a condo. And when somebody purchases a condo, the ownership transfers. And it's no longer being managed and rented by BGV or whoever the successor of that is. So how does that work? Because
As I, as I just stated, it's the same term. So if it's one owner owns, owns one condo, it's still bound by the same terms whether BGV owns the remainder of the building. They can only rent it for that much. And if they choose not to rent it and they live in, live in the unit, then they wouldn't be subject to a rent cap because there's, it's owner occupied. Yeah.
Just that deed restriction survives on every one of those units, no matter who.
I understand that. I'm, I'm talking about how do you price the condo? And how do you figure in the HOA fee if that ownership type? Suppose half, half the building goes condo, half the building's rental. What are the economics of that? Because I don't understand it and it seems to me that the town has not addressed it. So it's an open issue waiting for sometime in the future, BGV to say, hey, town, we want to condominiumize this. And then are we going to work out what the numbers are?
I don't, I don't, there's nothing in the agreement or there's no reason for us to get into business of what that, those, that condominiumization would be sold for. It still has to be used for the
Mark, and you're agreeing with me. There's nothing in the agreement that would define that.
No. Because we don't believe there needs to be because the deed restriction survives in all cases. And so it has to meet the terms of that. And the rent that's identified includes all utilities. So most of the things that you would see in HOA dues are associated with that rent already tied into that number.
I mean, just to give a little background, I mean, this, the way the deal was structured was not, you know, done without, without care. I mean, this, this was negotiated probably over three meetings where there was very much kind of hard lines going back and forth in terms of what would be acceptable to the applicant and to the town. So not unlike some of the development agreements we've done recently with conversions where we've also had a maximum rent cap, but we've deliberately not had a maximum resale. Because that seems to be kind of the line that most of the applicants just don't want to. They want some flexibility and really having a rent cap in place is already like driving down the cost that they can, they can resell. So that's, that's been a, like a ongoing conversation, not only in this development and annexation agreement, but also two of the there's one that's actually an open development agreement proposal right now. It's going to second reading and one that we just approved in the last couple, recently in the last, over the last couple of months.
Okay, I don't want to belabor it. That's all I had.
Thank you, Mark. I think it was a good question. Appreciate the answer. Cleared it up for me too. Mike, any questions for staff?
Nice work on your first presentation, Amelia. Under architectural compatibility, there may be a typo. It states that the non-reflective standing seam metal roof is the primary roofing material, which is complemented by asphalt shingle accent roofing. But the drawings are flipped, the drawings have X asphalt shingle on the building as a whole and a metal roof on the crash enclosure.
Yeah, let me double check, but I'm looking at it right now on the screen and that is what it says. It's flipped, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
No further questions.
Thank you, Mike. Susan, any questions for Seth?
No questions.
Thank you, Susan. Matt, any questions?
I don't have any questions, no, thank you.
Great, thank you.
I have questions about the natural wood trim. I'm trying to figure out what is natural wood trim on this and what is not. So like the fascia board. I don't know if that's natural wood. Only place I could find natural wood trim is on the ends, which is number is it 16?
It's 9, let me check.
Anyway. Maybe you could just make it more clear in your next drawing, so it'd be good. I think that's a requirement.
Yeah, absolutely. Happy, happy to make that clearer.
Minimize to me, or maybe I'm just not seeing the arrows pointing to it. Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Oh, no questions for Seth.
I also have no questions. I have a couple of housekeeping things. In your internal circulation, I think you have a typo. Said that vehicle or side exit provided highway nine through inches at the northeast corner of the site. It's actually in northwest, not that it's a big deal, did send me my brain in a loop for a minute. And then also just another housekeeping thing that also sent me in a loop for a little while is on the set of plans. Page C 500, it's showing a infiltrator system. Detail, but it's not anywhere on the plans. And I, I ended up calling engineering to find out what this was and, and got that answer, but just as a is it? I couldn't find it.
Right here. On page 55, it's the hashed area contact chamber max infiltration system. And it's at the northwest side of the building.
I did find it is on northwest side of the building, so thank you. I couldn't find it. And I'm pretty good at reading plans, but I searched for it. So thank you for clarifying that because it sent me in a, in a circle for a while today. I have no other questions. And so that brings it to Graham to present, I believe.
Good evening, Graham Frank from Breckenridge Grand Vacations. Not a, Amelia did a great job, not a ton of presentation tonight other than attempting to answer questions. Mark, to your question, to Chris's comments, we went back and forth for days around the deed restriction, which runs with the land. So even if you condominiumize it, that deed restriction will run with each unit. And our intention was one of two things. A, to provide front of house management housing that potentially people could buy, right? To take that stepping stone into the market. So it may not just be for rent. It may be for those individuals that want to drop an acre here and live here. And, and the unit sizes, we tried to appoint them that they could accommodate a young family. Right before you hopefully make your next move to a single family to something else. So that was the intentionality of that. And we felt that that deed restriction was robust enough that it would cover, A, the rental for a third party person who qualified trying to buy it and rent it to somebody because your yield would be very low. But also would artificially lower the purchase price or the sale price for somebody moving in or moving out. That was the thinking there and those were the mechanisms that we thought were in place. In terms of the wood trim, it's around the windows.
And the, the intention of the ability of first right of refusal of the town would be to maintain that, that price cap control.
No, the town wouldn't maintain the price capture control, just the town would have the ability to
But the fact that they can have first right of refusal.
It's a, but it's a refusal. Sure, it, it's not a right of first offer though. So you would have a free market theoretical offer in place that the town could step into and act upon that price. Yep.
Understood. Thank you.
And we will do a better job of denoting the trim around the windows. And, and then overall, obviously the aesthetics, we feel are more robust than the parcel two project that we brought in. And that was the intentionality of working through this at the entry to town and we had a site that allowed us to do more things than the parcel two site that you guys saw at the last meeting. Well, I believe the last meeting. So presentation wise, that is what we have. And welcome any other questions that you guys have for this one.
Thank you, Graham. Mark, do you have any further questions for Graham?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Ago you were here and when questioned about the front elevation of the building that you were proposing for the North Gold Rush Lot. You told the commission that you'd spoken to every box setting subcontractor available in Colorado. And that none of them were willing or able to offset the modules on the project to create a more interesting front elevation. Tonight you return with a project showing that you intend to create that offset with this subject project. Can you explain that inconsistency?
Well, what you stated was incorrect. I didn't say that all of them said they wouldn't. I said that we had never been successful and we had never found someone that was successful with lapping in the boxes to create a waterproof scenario during the set. There was nobody that said they would not do it. What I, what I gathered was no one has had success in doing so. So I think that clarification is really important. I think if you look, if you bring up this front elevation here, what you will see is the vertical lines and where you step, you step to an overhang. So you wouldn't be leaking into a box below. And that raftered roof gives you the ability to set those trusses and create an overhang that stops that water running down that fascia and into those problems that we were talking about on the parcel two project. So you see that vertical surface, that straight line? That is what we were trying to accomplish. So I don't, it wasn't a bait and switch or mislead you by any means. We tried to follow exactly what we learned on that vertical surface. And all of those balconies are bolt on. So they wouldn't create an infiltration scenario.
All right. At a previous meeting, the commission was shown a set of concept drawings done by BHH. Those drawings depicted an interesting mountain modern design using large wood beams, supporting roof overhang elements, stone veneer features and generally was a more attractive building than what you're proposing. What happened to that concept?
That was a fee simple building that Marty Getz had had designed. That would have yielded fee simple free market rates, A, on rental and B, on sale. That is not what we were designing to, per the development agreement. We were designing to meet the code for the development agreement with the restrictions from our development agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Mike, do you have any questions?
Graham, a couple of questions on the roof. We've clarified that the roof of the apartment or building is shingles. And then there's a note about photovoltaic panels substantially covering the roof. Do you have any more information on that?
On the PV that would go up there? I don't think we have the design yet, but
So the nature of my concern or question is just architectural compatibility and color of the shingles. And I, I know we're in preliminary, I get it, but sometimes photovoltaic is shiny and really sticks out like a sore thumb. And other times it's nicely integrated and relatively close to the color of the shingles. So without telling you what to, how to design it, tell me your thoughts, Bill.
Yeah, Bill Campy, DTJ Design. Thanks, Mike. We, we, it's in design build mode right now, just as a heads up. So we're basically what we're indicating is going to be on the roof like we've done in our projects. It's all getting kind of worked through in terms of, you know, ideal pitch and all those kinds of things to make sure it's optimized. So I don't have any detail on it outside of or in that process. I think you, you might've gone through this before. It's kind of like a design build process essentially. So we are working through that. We can follow up at the next hearing with more detail on that, if that's okay, to try to give you. But I understand your concern and we'll try to get it to blend into the roof as best as possible. That would be all of our goals, I think. While also the trick is always, which I'm sure everybody knows, is to do that while also getting the optimal amount of, you know, return on that investment for everybody and we all want that too. So we're balancing those things.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Thanks, Chair.
I would further note, similar to this building, you know, being required to, I guess, meet the requirements for parcel four. In the, in the development agreement, there's a requirement to offset, or they, they can offset on other properties in town. And so this has always been kind of pegged as one of those, as well as the Breck Inn to the north. And so this has always been kind of pegged as one of those, as well as the Breckin to the north. So, I mean, yeah, I think we'll hope to see some illustrations with the solar on because it is something that they're essentially required to do. So.
Finals should have illustrations of what they've proposed on the PV array. Thank you, Chris. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mike. Susan, any questions for Graham?
No questions.
Matt, any questions for me? Any questions? Thanks. Elaine?
Um, so I just want to clarify. So the wood trim is around the windows and are those kicker, are those?
I believe up to the rafters, yes.
Okay, those are all wood too. Okay. Yeah, thanks.
Not real wood.
We'll get you that information for the next one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Elaine.
Sorry, just, just to add for clarification, in the agreement, it specifies window trim only for, so.
Oh, okay. All right.
Alan.
Yeah, a couple of things. One is the dumpster access. It's, I'm just wondering, I know we're not supposed to design, but I'm just thinking that truck is going to have to back up through two rows of cars. And a lot of people here don't remember to put up their bike racks in the summer. I'm just wondering if the northeast corner might make a better location. That way you can just do a 180, you know, pull in and then back up to that northeast corner. And, and also everyone on the west elevation won't have to hear the backup signal early in the morning.
So it's always funny to me how you guys always identify all the problems we ran into. Because it's like we've totally located that dumpster in so many locations on this property. And believe it or not, this is the best.
Okay.
For a variety of reasons. There's a lot of utilities and easements we have to deal with on this property.
Okay.
In addition to the turning radius concerns and in addition to how to move snow around. And so there's a few areas we would have liked to have placed it if we didn't have a lot of those other elements to affect the reality of the site. It's a kind of a complicated site that way. You have a couple of excess easements. You have, it's really tricky. So believe it or not, I, as much as I agree with that, what you said, I think this is really the location that it's going to end up at. So.
Sounds like you put.
What's the deal with the northwest corner? I mean, there's space.
Northeast.
Yeah, northeast.
Yeah, that's, so there's both an access and a series of utilities through that area.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
And then, sorry. But you've thought, you've thought about it. I just.
I know.
The first tenant who loses their bike rack, that will be the only one. The, and the second is just with the potential for PV particularly, I guess it would be on the western eve. Just have you thought about the snow load sliding off of that? It's going to go right onto your pedestrian access and possibly some of the balconies.
Yeah, we're going to have to incorporate all the usual things you guys are aware of to kind of manage snow on the roof. You know, it, it's to get the kind of efficiencies we need here to, to make this thing work and to really, you know, provide the best. Right now, the design's really around optimizing home, you know, homes in our community. That's really the goal here. And so and do it in a way that's affordable for, for folks. So we've really worked hard to kind of combine all that with design and the full of it. So it's a complicated mess that way, but we will have to be paying attention to that for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so you'll, they're not going to go off the edge of the roof. There's going to have to be a transition to the roof and all the things that, you know, you guys.
Funnel it away from the front. Okay.
Yeah, well, funnel away. We're going to have that load, but we're going to have to do snow fencing and things like that to accommodate that. Yeah.
Okay, great. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, Alan. I have no questions for Graham. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I guess we'll open it up to public hearing. And if you're out there in Cyberland, please raise your hand with the icon at the bottom of your screen and press star nine. And, or, and then star six to unmute yourself.
Not currently seeing any hands raised online.
Okay, thank you, Amelia. I don't see anybody in our audience, so we can move on from public hearing. And we'll move on to comments, Commissioner comments.
Should we answer your questions as well in our comments?
Yes, please.
Yes, thank you, Alan.
All right.
For bringing that up.
Six, right?
General comments of, I think it's making the best of a space. And I'm glad in this case, town council let you go to three stories. Architectural compatibility, I agree with the stories. Yes, I agree that two and a half on the north and it looks like two on the south. I think there's sufficient buffering. It's an area, it's a big open lot now, so any buffering at all will be great. I agree with the point analysis and have no additional comments.
Thank you, Alan. Elaine?
Okay, I agree with the architectural compatibility. And that the, on number two, I agree with that they meet those story requirements. Those buffering, fencing and landscaping seems sufficient, yes. And I agree with the preliminary point analysis. And I have no comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine.
Thank you. I also agree that it, you know, it, it meets the architectural compatibility as well as the, the two-story, three-story provision. And that the fence is adequate for buffering on the north and east sides. And yeah, I have no further comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Susan?
I agree that the, with, that the project had, is in architectural compatibility. I agree that the north and south facades read as allowed in the agreement. I agree that the proposed buffering is sufficient. I agree with the preliminary point analysis and I have no additional comments.
Thank you, Susan. Mr. Gill.
Architectural compatibility, yes. North and south facade heights, yes. Buffering, yes. With the caveat that as the report stated, we will see the forthcoming fence design and review it. Agree with the preliminary point analysis, additional comments. I do think the gable roof addition makes this more compatible with Breckenridge's vernacular. I know it's not the same market or price point as the 2022 design, but I think the gable roof works here. So thank you, Graham and Bill. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mike. And Mark?
Graham, I don't want you to think that I'm targeting you in particular. I'm frustrated. I don't like this design. And I'm frustrated as a result of concessions that were made by town council. I personally believe we're in fruit. And I would have liked to have had a better product here, but I understand you're making business decisions, which I respect. So. So consequently, no, I don't agree that it's architecturally compatible. Number two, I agree. Number three, I agree. And number four, I agree.
Thank you, Mark. I also agree with the architectural compatibility on number one. And that the north and south facades meet the, the agreement. I agree with the proposed buffering fencing, also with the caveat that we'll be seeing the fencing plan. I agree with the recommended preliminary point analysis and I have no further comments. Thank you, Graham.
Amelia, do you want to ask us if we think they're ready for final hearing next or?
I am. That they're ready for final hearing next.
Mark? Yes. Mike?
Yes.
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 And I also say yes.
Thanks for that assist, Alan.
All right. I think that wraps up this preliminary hearing. Thank you. Thanks, Graham. We'll move on to the town council update. Mark?
Thanks, Ethan. So the council, one of the things that was presented to them was the Merge Comprehensive Open Space Sign Plan. So we've hired a firm called Merge out of Beck East. And they've done a whole new sign package design for all our trail signage and kiosk and everything. The whole idea is to come up with a more comprehensive approach to address all sign issues, but also to reduce the clutter and all these signs that crop up over time, which you can see on some of the trails. So it's a real clean, good looking package that, sorry, I didn't bring it to show it to you. But I, I, we're pretty excited about what they've come up with and that'll be our template for moving forward. We'll implement part of that. Probably a first phase of that by this fall. And then you'll be seeing a lot more of it in the coming years. In, in next year, we'll probably in 2026, we'll probably implement most of it. In terms of all the signposts and everything are going to have a distinct look to them. But we're really excited about that. The town council and BOSAC both got a chance to review this kind of final draft design and they're very excited about, everyone was pleased with it. So we're moving forward with that and you'll, like I said, be seeing that on the trails here coming up towards the end of the year and into next year.
Mark, would it be possible to share the packet with us?
Sure.
Because my husband and I have had some input into the process and be interested to see where they're going with it. We've had some real questions about readability and and how they're alerting the, the different kinds of trail users.
Yeah, absolutely. And the one thing you need to know is they've come up with a, it's pretty extensive. The, the goal is not to put every sign and every trailhead in that. It's more selective in where we put them. But it's coming up with a uniform package of what they look like and what they're used for. So I think we'll be seeing more of the you are here type things at intersections on trails and stuff like that, which we're a little bit short on in places. So anyway, yeah, I'd be glad to share that with you.
Thanks.
So I'll do that. And then in terms of the planning items, I was not here last week, so I'm going to have Chris actually go over that in terms of planning. Go ahead, Chris.
Absolutely. Well, first off, the council did end up approving the Kingdom Park Pavilion and Skate Park town project that you all recommended. So I think that wasn't to anyone's surprise on that project. And really I think the, the big item of the night was kind of the, the second work session related to neighborhood preservation policies. And on the second one, you know, there was kind of a list of topics that the council wanted us to explore a little bit more. And, and to back up a little bit, I'm not sure that everyone here is familiar with the, the neighborhood preservation policy, but really was targeted at reducing the appearance of, of home size and limiting home size on large lots, single family homes outside of the conservation district that do not have building envelopes on, on their platted subdivisions. So the Weishorn would be probably one of the best examples of a neighborhood that's subject to that. I think probably the one that most people are the most familiar with. After the first work session where we kind of threw out like a host of potential things we could explore, the council did kind of eliminate from their recommendation, you doing further density limitations on those lots, but want us to explore some other avenues that do also influence the overall size and specifically looking at setbacks and building height. Because really those are the three probably principal things that really influence the actual physical size of a home. So with those, we, 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 you know, looked at reducing setbacks. And what was suggested was to eliminate the allowance of relative setbacks or going down to the absolute, but taking negative points such as tonight would be an example in going to just the absolute setbacks that are, that require combined 50 foot side yard setback, 25 in the front, 15 in the rear. And in doing so, we provided them with information against other peer communities such as Aspen Vale, Summit County. And I'm trying to think if, there's one other one, but basically we made a matrix that showed like on the front, we're actually more restrictive on, or on the sides are more restrictive, but on the front and back are maybe a little bit less. So that was kind of how that I think helped form that decision. They also looked at the potential to restrict building height below the current 35 feet for single family homes. With one suggesting being going down to 30. They ultimately decided against doing that because they thought it may influence, I guess, like result in less roof form diversity. You couldn't have as interesting a roof forms. You couldn't have as many gables. You might have more flat or shed roofs, but instead keeping it 35, but now we're kind of asked to go back and look at maybe having a maximum percentage of ridge that can be up to that 35 feet and maybe having another kind of lower threshold below that. So our next step is really to start working with some people from the design community about, you know, maybe what the pros and cons and maybe what the appropriate percentage would be. We also looked at, you know, some other more, I guess, like superficial design aspects such as glazing and even like building orientation. Ultimately, because we do have a variety of how buildings are oriented in these neighborhoods because of the, the increased setbacks. We don't require a front door facing the street. We do. If you go through these neighborhoods, there's, there's kind of a pattern that replicates on the east side of the street that faces west towards the 10 mile range, we actually have a lot of facades that kind of look like rear facades with more glazing to take advantage of those views. And then across the street, on the west side of the street facing east, you have facades that typically have less glazing and have a more traditional front door with big views out of the back. And I think that that was something, we, we gave lots of visual examples of all different styles of architecture. That's been pretty consistent really from the 60s on that this, that was the, the pattern. You know, you go back to some of the early chalet, even some mid-century modern, even some more rustic. The glazing is actually amazingly similar between all these different architectural styles in terms of the percentages. We also pointed out with our new building code, our most recent update to the building code, that facades are limited to 30% glazing on any facade unless they go through the zero energy home ready program, which is a much more restrictive. So the building code is also kind of getting at glazing a little bit unless you're building a much more efficient home. So kind of based on that, they decided they didn't really want to address glazing. They thought, leave it to the building codes and also kind of honoring the existing characters in there. And I think that one of the big takeaways from this, from providing a, a pretty good visual, short visual history, highlighting both the Weishorn and the adjacent Goldplaque subdivision from the 60s to the present is there is a remarkable amount of diversity and architectural styles. And that really, that's the character there. It's that diversity and, and really the authenticity of that neighborhood. So if they were to say you need to go to a, a more consistent architectural style, I think they realized that would actually be going against the character of the neighborhood. Where, you know, like newer neighborhoods where they were built with the premise of having HOA standards and the architectural style, that is the style. But in these ones, kind of the individuality is the style of the neighborhood. So I think that's one thing that really was echoed during, during the work session. We also looked at just general, some sustainability issues and some of it's a little bit out of our control. We looked at, you know, requiring for construction waste diversion, but by not being the operator of the landfill. But by not being the operator of the landfill, it is, it's really hard to enforce that. We're not the controlling body. That's a priority of the town to kind of work with the county to try and further that. And just understanding at this point, it's something that we really can't take on just yet. The council was also supportive of just kind of the trend of working with the building community on updating the codes periodically, which I think we've had a lot of success. And really, the, you know, the builders that sit on those and have a lot of like real-world feedback and experience, I think that there's always been some give and take. But if you look at the progress that we've made over the last 15 to 20 years, you know, since that was really found, like we have definitely ratcheted up the standards. And I think we also have pretty good buy-in from the building community and design community. So I think they were supportive of kind of staying the course with that and just having periodic updates to the building code. And then the last item, actually kind of in a similar vein to what was touched on earlier this evening, is the council asked us to eliminate some of what they perceived as the easier positive points. EV chargers being one, positive points for landscaping on single-family homes. And really just having those tools of points available for larger commercial and multifamily projects where they're going above and beyond with the code. So that's something that we will get working on. They also looked, understanding that we need to have a balance code where we can't just have all negative points. Or you might as well just have traditional Euclidean zone. They also asked us to kind of explore some new things that we want to incentivize. So we have a list of topics to kind of look into further. Some of the ones they recommended, we actually are doing, such as ADUs and electrification of homes. But there's some other ideas that were thrown out and we'll explore. So kind of the next steps in this process is to reach out and maybe talk to some of the people in the design community about some of the suggestions, also the builders and some realtors, and then maybe start working with some of the individual owners that own property within the 14 neighborhoods that the MPP regulates. But I think, you know, that one of the things that was loud and clear from the councils, they really want to have a clear communications plan to explain what the goals of the program are and also provide opportunity for meaningful feedback from affected property owners and also other people that are just in the community. Maybe you don't live in those neighborhoods, but you live adjacent or you, you know, you drive through them frequently. So where they come back and talk communications, actually at the next council meeting and kind of, kind of make sure that they're in agreement with where we think we should go. But we've already had discussions with our town communications team about designing a strategy. So with that, I know that's a lot. Happy to take any questions or any feedback related to any of the planning topics from the town council.
Any questions or feedback?
With regards to negative points and setbacks, what I think I heard you say is that one of the proposals was that setbacks are the setbacks and you can't get around them by taking negative points.
That's correct, yeah. The proposal that they supported was just going to, actually they recommended relative setbacks and adopted those as absolutes for large lots, single-family. And then to be clear, it's not related to other types of buildings or buildings that are in the historic district, but really where we have these large lots where they're, you know, if you're on a half-acre lot, you probably, there's no really physical constraint of why you shouldn't be able to meet the setbacks on a lot of that size.
I have a quick question. You talked about the EV, you can get three points. When did that come in? And that must be fairly recent. And then how did people get positive points before?
How did I say before? Landscaping was probably the most common. And there was also a higher point total. We, I think there was maybe some hand wringing about how landscaping points were being awarded because it was four points. And I think there was maybe some concern of, that seems like a lot. And then we went down to having a two, like an increment of two. And that, that's still, but that's more subjective. So I mean, I think it is good to have, you know, there's room for some subjectivity in it, but it also is easier if we have clear goals, you know, absent, unless we have really clear precedent toward points. I'm trying to think of, I mean, in the past, there was a lot of easy points. There was, before required people to pave your driveway. There's a lot of things that we now require that maybe at one point we incentivized. So paving your driveway is a, is a good example. That was something in the 90s that we gave a low, you know, point award for it. Most people probably wanted to do already. And then we decided that we should just require that, that was scrapped. So there is kind of an evolution at times. But if you look back through some older point analysis, it's really interesting because there's things that now we are probably discouraged because we are really trying to build out a town at that point. So we're encouraging development. We're now, we're on a much slower development. And I think landscaping actually is kind of one of those policies. I mean, if you, I mean, for people like Ethan and Mike that have been around for a long time, they remember when the town was essentially a pile of dredge rock. And so, you know, you know, if you read our landscaping policy now and it probably seems a little questionable, like, aren't people already doing it? Don't we have nice landscaping? Well, if you go back to when that probably was implemented in the early 80s and really through our peak periods of development into the 90s, we needed some softening. The town, just because of the destruction of the dredges, looked really rough. So anything we could do to get some greenery and soften the image, and to a large extent, you know, it's been very successful. If you look at the Riverwalk today versus what it looked like, you know, in the late 80s, it's pretty dramatic. But now that we're built out and we also have other maybe competing, when we're talking about defensible space and some of the other things that are there, the landscape code, you know, in terms of relative points, probably isn't, is something that we need to incentivize as much as we did during the past time.
Can we give positive, we don't have anything on sprinkler systems or fire. I don't remember seeing anything like that in the code.
No, we don't have anything in materials. I mean, the building code has definitely periodically been hardened. Or we've had an ordinance in, you know, I don't know how many years. It seems recent, maybe it's in the last five years where we prohibited shake shingle, wood shake shingles. And, you know, I think so we've taken some steps that require some amount of building hardening. But I have a feeling that, you know, related to building codes, I think as a result of the recent fires, there'll probably be some additional requirements for building hardening coming up.
Your insurance policy will drive that out.
Chris, has there been any thought about no longer giving points for EV capable installations as opposed to EV chargers?
Um, you know, I guess we'll have to look at how it was written. I think all the ones for single families, and that was largely the discussion. It was, I think it was looked at kind of somewhere near, they thought like those are easy points and people are taking advantage of them. And also we're getting to a point where the technology is fairly readily available. If you want to put that in, it's not hard to do. We got, you know, a pretty good critical mass locally of charging networks. Our fast charging is probably a little deficient, but our public level two is actually, I think, per capita is pretty robust. But in some ways, being EV capable, particularly for large projects, is still a really good thing because it's, you know, if you don't have the things kind of preset in terms of even like the conduit being laid and everything, it's really hard to go and retrofit in the future.
Well, I think that's true. I just feel like people are getting points and it's not really functional.
Yeah, you know, I think other than the largest projects, I don't know if we've had any like one that's gone for EV capable, like on a single family. And I think that's where they were most concerned.
It has been on the larger projects.
Yeah.
Still not using it.
The EV capable is such an easy point because it costs virtually nothing to put a 50-amp circuit in there. It's negligible. I wanted to comment on the, on the discussion about the building height and that council's response was that it would limit, going down to 30 would limit the architectural availability of, or freedom to do taller gable roofs and so on and so forth. A byproduct of that, and lots of dormers, is that we need to put more heat tape on it. And I know we've discussed this before and the energy coach wanting to figure out how we cannot use heat tape. To me, as a builder, and really dealing with heat tape a lot over the last 30 years, the number one reason for heat tape is the architectural design. That's it. If you do a straight gable roof or flat roof or shed roof, you need hardly any heat tape. So I just wanted to throw that out there, that was balancing there.
And I think that's the type of comments where we want to get from designers and the building community. So like when we're looking at all the pros and cons of different things like, because, you know, I think for certain, I mean, I think as a whole, the council is very concerned also about just the energy of larger homes. And really what we found from Picken County, they're really extensive study where it really shows that it's exponential as you increase in square footage because it's, it's these amenity loads where, you know, for every thousand square feet, it gets, it gets more extreme because it's more exotic with their programming when you get up to it. So, you know, I think that's something that resonated with the council and particularly Summit. That was maybe their number one priority with some of the energy and efficiency aspects. So that's definitely good feedback.
So along those lines, you know, on the high-end spectrum, one of the things that people are really looking at a lot is to put in these oxygenation systems.
Oh, yeah.
I did a project up in Timber Trail, the remodel I did a couple of years ago. We kept the same square footage, but we put in a whole lot of extra stuff. We had to jump it from a 220-amp service to an 800-amp service to accommodate all the toys that the client wanted. They put in oxygen, I struggle with wrapping my lips or my tongue around that. They put that system in every bedroom, seven bedrooms. That required a big jump in, in, in service. Yeah.
Huge, like so you two units per bedroom kind of thing?
Not every, you mean the condensers?
Yeah, yeah.
Some of the bedrooms required two, not everyone. But yes, the larger, the two main suites required two, actually, one of them required four generators. We have, I can't remember, but there's, I think there's 16 generators in that house, which requires a fair amount of power along with many other toys. So that's something to look at. That meter spends big time. So.
Two things I would consider is, one, the 2024 building code, IBC. We're still in 2018 and Vail's on 2024. And by doing that, you know, there's a, just a ton of better building practices, better energy efficiency that we would automatically gain.
I'm sorry, Mike, do you want to talk about what IRC we're on?
Yeah.
And we're still under 2018 here and.
Right. So, and I don't know that that has to be a positive point thing, but I think that's someplace we're lagging. You may know more than I do.
Yeah, actually, I love that. Yeah, we're actively reviewing that.
Okay.
And, you know, the intent is towards the end of this year to adopt it for sure. It's a big step up and, you know, we've had a lot of experts taking a look at that to see. And the question is, is do we need to still go beyond that code even? Do we want to get even more aggressive? And so that's an evaluation that we're doing as staff, with staffs from other towns right now. And we'll be going more public to the, you know, contractors, architects, et cetera, here in the next several months to get their feedback on that as well. Because it's definitely, definitely a direction we want to go. And it's still, there's a lot of opportunities to take alternative paths, like zero energy ready homes still under the 2024. But everyone's recognized it as a huge step forward where the whole sustainability community was heavily involved in that whole, in the energy folks in that development of that code, whereas they really weren't as integral in the old ICC codes, you know, 2018 and before, even 2021.
Sounds like you're on it. And you're saying that the town is looking at possibly going more aggressive than, than, than the 2024, right, on the energy codes. My comment on that would be to, as a builder, to be, to look at, sometimes, in my view, it doesn't balance out. We're, as a builder, you're forced to do, to meet all of these energy codes, i.e. R30 walls a lot on some of the projects in conjunction with triple-pane windows and many other things. And in my estimation, we're burning more energy bringing those, that, those, that, those materials onsite that we're saving by applying the materials. And I just would say, think out of the box some and think about that. I think, I think the energy codes are, have improved hugely. And I think a very classic example of that in the Wellington-Lincoln Park neighborhood, the difference between the homes in Lincoln Park and the homes in Wellington is substantial in the, in, in the insulation and so on and so forth. Alan and I were talking about that just the other day. But, but I probably won't be one of the builders involved in those discussions. So I'm giving my input here that sometimes we're cutting off our own foot getting to the start.
I think that's a good point. And I think the other side of that is, is how much cost are we adding to achieve goals which are, in many cases, just optics?
And.
You know, a good case in point is that our net zero goals add about 50 grand to our affordable housing. And we're asking people who can't really afford to come up with another 50 grand in their mortgage payments to accommodate what our sustainability goals are. May or may not be achieving anything.
That's a.
I think that's a good point.
That's a really good point. And I'll point to another example of that. A number of years ago, when I think 2018 IRC called for sprinklers in all residential homes across the board. And here in the town of Breckins and the county, through a lot of talks and input from builders and other professionals, and we were able to keep that, to amend that in our code to be anything over 6,000 square feet. And I believe the reason that we were able to justify that is sprinklers are not to save the house, they're to protect the firefighters. That's what sprinklers are for.
Which is the reason that it's in the code.
That's right. That's why it's in the code. Right, I understand that. That's, that's why it's there. But because we have such a robust fire department, fire departments within the county, and they deem that pretty much all houses, residential areas are within 10 minutes of full response, they, they were able to say, we're going to cut that out. We're going to, we're going to say anything over 6,000 square feet. My point about that is there was a lot of pushback because when you're forcing small residential homes to have sprinkler systems, you're pricing.
Significant cost. When I, when I looked at my house, it was another $70,000.
So you're pricing, you're pricing working people out of the market. And and I think that the 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 energy code also threatens to do some of that along with is it? Is it a political thing we're doing? It makes us all feel good that we're adding all of this in insulation, but we're burning so much energy creating the insulation, bringing the insulation here, so on and so in a rant. Let's have a nice night.
Second code I would look at is the California Fire Resiliency Code. I I don't know what the twenty four IBC adds to that or has, but there's a lot of simple things that can be done in construction to reduce infiltration of flying embers. Wouldn't even notice it architecturally.
And they will add some more.
On on that noted project that we're
They will add some more following this fire.
Yeah.
Yeah. Following what they learned from this fire, they will add some more. And I think that's a good point.
So I would look at fire resiliency.
A project that I'm just starting and where I'm involved in and starting in the county, we're doing all aluminum siding. And there's some very high, well, we're looking at it. It's not approved yet, but some very high end aluminum siding that that appears it's faux wood. And so the client wants to look at that. Insurance companies, he had a very hard time with the insurance. Insurance companies are loving that, so on and so forth. So it's something to look at.
I think Alan, that's one of the things that why not make, this, I'm just off the top of my head, make density relative and give an incentive for less density and negative points for higher density in the large lots. And maybe even consider, I I know the county code, I don't know what the town code is. Another way to address the big big density is allow them to have a second non-ADU structure, like a grandmother's cottage as part of the density. So instead of one big house, they can have a little studio in the back and that takes away the big, huge facade that everyone is concerned about. Okay.
I got it.
We did, we did actually float that as one of the first, like, we're doing a lot split with two smaller structures and that was
End up as teleurides.
I mean, not not to that extent, but we're looking at like larger lots for they'd still like a lot, a lot, a lot of these places, they have you know, over a half acre to acre and a half lots. So you're not, it's still like a smaller one. But I was saying, then you would have like you know, instead of having something that go up to eight thousand square foot, you could have yours dividing it out and there was some concern just because of it being conflict with the Joint Upper Blue Master Plan. And I think also you know, possible, but there's a perception of like more intensity by having more structures in the neighborhood. So
Thank you. Any other issues or questions?
Oh, thank you, Chris.
With that
Thanks for the discussion.
I will adjourn this meeting.